So just as a quick reminder, as the first speaker is coming up, we'll put two minutes up here and you can track it. I will let you know when the two minutes is up if you have lost track there. And I want to hear from everybody, so I try to keep you right on time. Laura, go right ahead.
I'm sorry, it's item two. I wrote that wrong.
Okay.
We have a new person that's been appointed to the Racial Profiling Commission. So that's pretty exciting, except for the Racial Profiling Commission is pretty defunct. I'm going to read from an article from December 2012 in the News &amp; Review by Rahim Hossini called "Low Profile," concerning the subject of the Racial Profiling Commission. Sacramento's law enforcement's documented trouble with racial profiling hasn't dissolved, but the commission tasked with addressing it pretty much has. The city's Community Racial Profiling Commission is mired in a kind of bureaucratic limbo. Because of the specific way the city envisioned the commission and a lack of political will to update it, members haven't convened a meeting since September 2011. And you see, they commend none in 2012. Despite being confronted with new tales of racially biased policing, in 2008, Data Collection Project documented that police officers were stopping blacks and Hispanics at a disproportionate rate and subjecting them to more pat-down searches and probation inquiries than their white and Asian counterparts. The report caused a stir at the time with the Police Department and the Office of Public Safety Accountability calling the results alarming. No one can say what effect, if any, reforms have had on racial profiling. Even without a new traffic enforcement study, other available statistics reveal that it remains a problem. On October 7th of last year, Councilmember Warren said that he expected to author a new ordinance within the next couple of weeks to reauthorize this commission. That was 13 weeks ago.
Ms. Rubicata, your time has expired. Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate it.
Okay, Claire White?
Claire White. Claire White has signed up for items six and nine.
So Claire, two minutes to talk to both everything on the consent, just to make sure you get it all in there.
Sure, thank you. My name is Claire White. I'm here from the National Lawyers Guild, and I'm here to talk about homelessness as it relates to the items on the consent calendar. First, I discovered today that even when you sign up for multiple items on the consent calendar, you're still relegated to two minutes to discuss each of them. And I think that that's incredibly problematic, particularly when we see more and more items being shoved to the consent calendar and not open for public hearings, because that doesn't give the public the opportunity to actually speak on those issues with any kind of depth. On this consent calendar alone, there's literally hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of spending, and to address each of those issues in a total of two minutes is not only improbable, but the gesture to allow us to do so is pretty hollow, since we can't actually get into these things. And this becomes really problematic, because what we're told regularly when we talk about homelessness is that the city is not a major financial player as it relates to homelessness. But when we see more and more money being spent for people who are already well off, or for more policing, or for HR grants, and contractor services, and things that aren't even explicitly set out in the agenda, it makes me wonder, where is the money for homeless services? Where is the money for after-hours bathrooms? Where is the money for water fountains? Where is the money for sleeping bags? Like, if we can spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on what seems to be normal day-to-day spending for the city, I would hope that you all could crack open the books and find a dollar here or there for our most vulnerable residents who today are sleeping out on the streets, because we know the shelters are full. And if you don't know that the shelters are full, then you need to engage, because they're more than full. Something you can do for free today that won't cost you money, even if there's none left over, is to end the camping ban. Right? The city has no financial incentive to keep the camping ban. I wrote to each of you, asking where you stood, and only heard from less than half, first of all. And finally, we need to know, why do you have a camping ban? There's no financial incentive, because people don't pay tickets. So I want to know why. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. White.
Okay. Mac Worthy?
Mr. Worthy, you're up.
For item number 11. And then the last speaker, item 14, is Joshua Foster.
Listen, people, we don't know what's going on here with Homeland Security, but we see continuously grants to what are you trying to do? Not one iota in this here report from Homeland Security said a word. Homeland Security didn't even weigh in on this. Why didn't Homeland Security have a slot in this report? Why put this pressure on a chief, and you know the problem is in administration? Control of a thug with a gun, that's your problem. But yet still Homeland Security is continuing, put out a grant here for this emergency. What is emergency now, if it's not emergency for black employment? There's no need to get no worse. What is this $30,000 going to do? How much of this $30,000 going to go to the June funds? That does come out. That's public rights to know. All you have to do is print out, just have the chief print it out here. We asked the HRA to print out the same type of thing. They wouldn't. Dojo Black wants to be here and read and read, but we can't see it. At least the chief put it so we could pick it up and look at it and go through it. Wake up, people, you're not doing what you promised the people to represent them properly. We're not getting jobs as coconuts in the system. The coconut that you choose is known to be white inside. We need the coconut, because it don't fall too far for the tree, the ones that's not white inside. Do you stick a needle in it and pull it out and see which is white? Why would you pick them all at the same time and don't know whether they're going to turn white or stay green inside? That's the black man. How do you choose the black folks that you choose to sit at the table that can't oppose your theory and philosophy? You've got a problem. It's not us, it's your problem.
Mr. Worthy, your time has expired. Thank you very much for your comments.
Joshua Foster?
Mr. Foster?
Good evening, council. So the problem I have with this resolution that you guys are trying to pass here is that you just assigned new members to the rate advisory committee. Obviously, the city manager's aware, I'm sure, that you guys are going to be coming to the citizens based on a recommendation from the rate advisory committee to raise their rates this year. We know that's coming. So to pass a resolution suspending competitive bidding on an item like this seems somewhat fiscally irresponsible before the rate advisory committee is going to be able to evaluate where we stand from a budget span point and where we're spending the money. It's not too far out of the realm of reality that this price could be, or this amount that's being allocated could be dropped significantly if there was competitive bidding allowed, which is a normal practice in the city. But nonetheless, this should be, at least, if it's not put out for competitive bidding, it should be suspended until the rate advisory committee's able to evaluate where they stand on the budget and utilities.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Foster.
We have one more speaker, Delphine Brody.
Also on item 14, I believe?
Yes, on item 14.
All right. Ms. Brody, you're our final speaker on public.
Good evening, council members. Delphine Brody with the Community Dinner Project. I am opposed to the expenditure that is being proposed here of $325,000 for an unnecessary fluoride feed system that has questionable value in rehabilitating wells, when the same amount of money could be spent to house some eight to 10 homeless people with a housing first here in Sacramento. Why is this not on our agenda yet? Please, put it on the agenda. This is a much more important and well-spent use of our funds. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. That's the last comment on the consent calendar. Councilmember Hanson needs to recuse himself from item five, so I think we'll take that item separately at the end, and looking for a motion for the balance. Moved? Seconded? All right, all in favor signify by aye. Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? Great, then we need a motion on item five, noted that Councilmember Hanson is recusing himself from this vote. Moved and seconded, all in favor signify by aye. Aye. Any opposed? Abstention out of Mr. Hanson on move. Mark.
It's critical. We don't see nothing of the people that you haven't made an agreement with. What is their condition of their income? That should be part of the staff report. Do those people have the money to correct the problems with the house? That's the bottom line, is not make another extra law. Because as lean's been put on property for the past hundred years, and as people in the courthouse and the inside connection here, that buys those leans for a 9% return. That's all over America. So why would you put pressure on the people that we don't know whether they have the funds to go out and get money to repair it? They may not even have funds. Did they come in? Did you have somebody to go to them? You know their address and the number of housing. And sit down and talk with them. Sit down and say, well, what is your income? People are on fixed income. You've got poor people on little shacks here. And the majority of those houses is in Del Paso Heights in South Sacramento. And a lot of the inspection that we see is, all the people that do it hire an attorney, when you go to inspect a outlet, if you don't have the proper tool to inspect it, whether it's wired up or not, but you write down that you inspect it, you have to have a specialty elder push in there to know whether it's functioning or not. That was set up just in case if something fall into the sink or the bathtub, it'll kick the circuit off. That's all that work. But you got reports here because Mr. Dojo over there at City College, I came in and talked to him, for him. Why put the pressure on the old man? Because you know that property sits so. Sutterville beside the City College is prime rental property. Force him to sell when that's all the old men have in this town. And you know that's happening.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Next speaker?
Larry Bell.
Mr. Bell?
This is about more than Social Security. It's about the Del Paso Heights community and housing reading. PG&E has not made good on its promises long before Christmas to see to it that the wrongfully disconnected gas pipe to my house is replaced and the meter is returned. If PG&E and City of Sacramento jointly and wrongfully damaged and welded a gas line to my house, the city and PG&E must be liable to replace the gas line without cost to the owner. The city must not issue a technical notice, in that case, 06OSAS04002, requiring purchasing a permit to replace the gas pipe and meters wrongfully taken. Many homeowners are getting Social Security and cannot afford to pay for wrongful acts of another. The city has erroneously reported a nuisance or dangerous building and may have fined the name of an individual homeowner for mental health or educational purposes. The city should cancel the fine and comply with the California Codes of Civil Procedure. If defamation and libel has been committed by the building inspector against a personal name or safe address, Human Resources should admonish the building inspector's names in question, February 2015. I'm 67 years old and not represented by a lawyer.
Ron Emsley?
Mr. Emsley, you're up.
Community Development Department has a record of scandalous operation, code enforcement, housing a dangerous building. Ask Charlie Sherman, one of your inspectors. He selectively picks the ones that he wishes to deal with, and if he doesn't want to deal with them, he just doesn't. So that's selective enforcement. I think that that's against the law. Look what happened to Danny Waters. You kept Danny Waters onboard. He got caught. The only reason he was smoked is because he got caught by the federal government, or you folks got caught by the federal government. And the minute Robbie left, Danny got smoked. You ought to hire him back. So the whole department is, it's a joke. No one cares, has no oversight. And especially with Charlie Sherman, what he did, or what he's doing, is ridiculous. But you don't care. Thank you.
All right, that's it for our public speakers on items 15 and 16, so we'll need a motion for each.
I'll move item 15, close the public hearing.
Moved? Seconded? All in favor signify by aye. Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? All right, item 16?
I'll move and close the public hearing.
Seconded? All in favor signify by aye. Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? All right, thank you, Ms. White. Appreciate it. Good luck with your training. Thank you. Thank you, ladies.
Okay, we're now on to the agreement contract review.
Before we move on, can I ask you a question?
Sorry? Yes.
In the case of Mr. Bell, where a citizen feels that he's been wrongly fined, what's the process of, how does he rectify that? How does he seek resolution?
City Attorney?
There are a couple of different types of appeal procedures. One could go to a hearing officer, another to an appeals board. So it depends on where the appeal arises out of.
Okay. So in the case of Mr. Bell, who should he go to at this point?
I believe that would have been item 16 that he was commenting on, and that actually goes through a hearing process that, I can go back through and provide council follow-up on that. We can do that certainly by tomorrow.
Or maybe someone to just talk to Mr. Bell and tell him where he needs to go.
We can follow up with a phone call. I'll provide my card to him.
Okay, thank you.
City Attorney, we're going to bring you his speaker slip that has some contact information on it, okay? All right, thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
Okay, item number 17 is for review only, but we do have one speaker on this.
It's item 17. I'm Claire White from the National Lawyers Guild and the Community Dinner Project of Sacramento. I came to speak on item 17 because I saw that it is a contract amount of $2.5 million. I find it frustrating that there isn't substantial more conversation about this, and I understand that there's a review. I'm just curious. So it's for the purchase of sedans, vans, SUVs, trucks, mowers, and sweepers. And I'm asking you folks about your spending priorities, and when you go through a massive contract like this, I hope that you're asking yourself, who is benefiting from this particular spending? Because I know people who need rides. So homeless veterans in Sacramento can't get a ride to the VA at Mather. There's no shuttle, there's no vans. In San Francisco, a couple of private agencies have purchased vans to be able to get people to the VA for medical care and for homeless inpatient processing, et cetera. But we don't have that here. Here at our community dinners, a lot of folks, if you don't know, have to be, if they have shelter, if they're fortunate enough to get a bed in a shelter, have to be at Bed Text by 6:00 or 6:30 PM. So they're out trying to find dinner, and then have trouble getting back to the shelter in time and risk being turned away, even for participating in something like, you know, this type of civic engagement, let alone just being out trying to deal with the daily grind, frankly. So this list of needs, there is a list of needs for the homeless residents of Sacramento, and this body seems content to pass that list of needs off to the county, or off to private providers, or off to nonprofit agencies. And I'm here to tell you that you can do better. Women on the street need sanitary napkins and tampons. People need food, sleeping bags, socks, right? It's not about what you have to do as a council. I understand that, like, your responsibilities to our homeless citizens have seemed to fall in very narrow areas, but ask yourselves what you could do. I mean, we see how much money gets spent here every single week, a ton. And for you to tell us that there's not enough to squeeze out for certain basic necessities for a couple thousand people in this city who are most, most desperate, is simply unacceptable.
Ms. White, thank you for your comments.
We have two more. Okay. We received two more requests, Delphine Brody and James Clark.
And just as Ms. Brody is coming forward, just to let people know, process-wise, when we put items on that are for review only, the reason we don't have conversation is because we're notifying the public that we're going to have conversation. So this item is on for February 10th, so it's fine that you're speaking now, but if you wanted to speak when the, to hear what the council's going to say, and when there would be a presentation, that would happen on the 10th. Go ahead.
Thank you. And we will speak then, too. I'm here also to raise my concern and opposition about a cooperative purchase agreement of replacement vehicles and equipment. It seems that when we're looking at the relative importance of purchasing sedans, vans, sports utility vehicles, and mowers and sweepers, when we could actually be purchasing housing for 100 women who are fleeing intimate partner violence through housing first, which does not exist in Sacramento, it's a no-brainer. Survivors of intimate partner violence need housing first. All that they're offered now is a waiting list to get into a shelter, and their future housing is in jeopardy. To me, the city needs to reevaluate its priorities when money is being spent in the $2.5 million level for questionable goods. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
James Clark?
Mr. Clark?
Hello, once again, council. My name is Fago with the Community Dinner Project in Occupied Sacramento. And one thing that I want to address about this is, just last week when we were here, we were being told that you can't even afford to pay the pensions that are already in existence. And already, you're looking at spending a frivolous $2,000, $2.5 million on more vehicles? Do we really need more vehicles in the city, or do we need better management of the vehicles that we already have? Better maintenance of the vehicles that we already have? I find it very appalling that we continue to hear that our city doesn't have the ability to pay off the debts it already has, and yet we're still already looking at spending more money that, well, I don't see the benefit of buying updated vehicles. Is our city just trying to keep up with the Joneses? Is it, like, just trying to look all super nice? I mean, if you take care of the vehicles, you don't need to buy new vehicles all the time. You don't need $2.5 million to replace vehicles that you could just repair for way less, when you can't afford to pay your own pensions. That means your own employees, and even the PD that are over here all the time, their pensions might not get paid because the city keeps spending money on things that it doesn't need. And at the same time, you've got people out there asking for a little bit of help that won't even cost them money, and we have to go through an arm and a leg just to be able to get that put on the agenda so we can actually address it and help come up to, come with solutions that are actually going to resolve the issue and save more money.
Mr. Clark, can I just hear you advocate for the police officers' pensions?
Any employee who gets a pension deserves to get their pension.
Good for you.
So it's all about equality, you know? And when anybody's pension's in jeopardy, that's not okay. You know, they've signed, the city's signed a contract with that, and I'd really like them to honor their contracts instead of spending money on more vehicles.
I appreciate your comments. Thank you. All right. All right, we don't, we won't take an action on that item today because it's on for the 10th. So you can come back and share your comments again, if you want to be a part of that discussion.
Okay, so now we're on to public comments for matters that are not on the agenda. All right. And I'll call three at a time, as is the custom. We'll start with Barry Broad, Andy Kahn, and Adam Sartain.
Good evening. I'm Barry Broad. I'm the director of the California Teamsters Public Affairs Council, and I don't want you to have a heart attack or anything, but I'm here to thank you. Well, last week, you took action at Councilmember Chenier's urging to ask the county to, to ask the city manager to approach the county with respect to the new tenant, if you will, going into the site of Campbell's Soup, to give preferential hiring rights to displaced workers from Campbell's Soup. Many are still unemployed. And so that they might have first shot at the jobs in the Macy's Warehouse project. There's a lot of, obviously, residents of the city, it's kind of right on the border there, that are residents of the city that work there. Obviously, tax dollars are spent there, and it would be kind of a nice end if those workers could find good jobs, and if Macy's would see to it that it would agree to pay those workers good union scale and pensions and so forth. We represent them in other Macy's Warehouse situations, so we're hoping that Macy's will see the light. And anyway, we very much thank you for your action and appreciate it a lot. Thank you.
Mr. Broad, don't go away. Councilmember Chenier would like to...
Yeah, real quickly, Barry, thanks for coming tonight. I don't know that the city manager has actually done that yet, but we had a discussion today. He will be doing that. And I'll also follow up with County Supervisor Kennedy, who I know is also taking the lead on this. It's in his district. I think I have a little corner of Campbell's Soup, but it's primarily the county that's been doing it. But thanks for coming up. It's just the right thing to do for those workers who've been displaced, so we'll see what we can do to help and support.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Okay, Andy?
Good evening, council. My name is Andy Kahn. I'm from the Essence of Life. About two weeks ago, Bob Sanders and I came here to speak on the issue of Nestle's Bottling Company and how much water they're taking from our aquifers. I'd just like to tell you, last October 16th, 80 of us participants, along with 400 supporters, went to Nestle's and, using nonviolent civil disobedience, shut down their plant for the day. We had international coverage on this, and we had calls from all over the country on this. And we also had calls from a lot of groups here in town, Water Justice, the Environmental Council, a lot of people that are willing to work with you to take the second step. The second step is to get this on the agenda and do one of three things. Either come up with a multi-tiered system of paying for the water, or a tax, which I think is more appropriate, because they are selling the water, they're water profiteers, not water users. Or we could have Nestle's leave. We have Nestle's leave and save ourselves 80 million gallons a year. So those are the options. I'd like to tell you what's coming up in the future. On October, on March 17th, we'll be doing another press conference, and press conference will be right outside these windows. And then on the 20th, we'll also be using nonviolent civil disobedience to close down Nestle's plant once again. Now, we'd like to see this on the agenda, because it takes a lot of effort to do these things. And we have the opportunity, in the city of Sacramento, to get a lot of money for our general fund, because Nestle's is not paying a water profiter rate, they're paying a water user's rate. So anyway, we'll be back at Nestle's, and we're hoping that you will put this on the agenda, because there are a lot of groups that actually want to work very hard with you on coming up with a system that is fair to the citizens, and I don't really care if it's fair to Nestle or not, but we're, you know, we're all working towards this together.
Mr. Kahn, your time has expired. Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Adam Sartain? Following Adam is Claire White, and then Nissim Lanyadu. Lanyadu, I believe it is.
Good evening, council. Mayor Protem. My name's Adam Sartain. I'm an analyst for the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee, which administers a federal housing tax credit program for the state of California. I just wanted to talk a bit about the mayor's State of the City address last Thursday, which I attended and was very happy to attend and to see all of the great things that are laid out for the future of the city. I was especially excited about two things that the mayor mentioned. One, that there's a goal of building 10,000 housing units in Sacramento in the downtown core in the next 10 years. And stop me if I got any of this wrong. The second thing I'm very excited about is that this vision of Sacramento 3.0 will be inclusive. And to me, that sounded like they're including people of all income levels. So to combine those two things, I would like to issue a challenge to you, the council, and if you would pass this on to the mayor. I would like to see that of those 10,000 housing units, no less than 40% be affordable to low-income families here in Sacramento. It's definitely doable. There are both federal and state funds that are available to bring in and make this happen. So, once again, you have hereby been challenged.
Thank you, Mr. Sartain. Claire? Ms. White?
And then it'll be Nissim after Ms. White.
Thank you. I'm Claire White, again. I'm still here from the National Lawyers Guild and the Community Dinner Project.
And I'm still here from the National Lawyers Guild and the Community Dinner Project. And this is what I came to talk about today, which is the camping ban. And I really, really hope to see it on the agenda. But I still, I'm holding out hope as an optimist that I'll see it in future weeks. I reached out after the last meeting to each of you, as I said, and have gotten responses from Councilmembers Chenier, Jennings, Hansen, and Carr so far, and Councilmember Harris. And I very much appreciate that and look forward to see where that's going. However, tonight, people will still get tickets for camping on the street because they're homeless. So I want to talk a little bit about long-term sustainable solutions. I think that's really positive. And I'm glad that the council and their responses have talked about focusing on that. However, I'd warn you, please, 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 it is bad to ignore the individual trees when addressing the future of the forest, right? Like, today, people are homeless. Today, people will get turned away from shelters. And today, people will get ticketed because of your failure to act in this meeting this evening. We want to see the camping ban on the agenda. The camping ban in this city, in case you forgot, is one of the most draconian in the country. It bans living outdoors in public or on private land, even with the owner's permission. What does enforcement look like on the street? Tonight, someone will get turned away from a shelter. Hundreds of people will get turned away from shelters. They will hopefully eventually find somewhere that's safe enough for them to bed down for the night. And at some point in the middle of the night, when their circumstances are already pretty dire, they will be awoken by a police officer with a loudspeaker, floodlights, telling them to move on, right, writing them a ticket, which they will not pay. And there's nowhere for them to go, and we all know it. So what does the city gain? You know, I, I want to know where each of you stand. At this point, I want a justification for the ban. The fact that it's there and that it is potentially constitutional is not enough. You have a moral responsibility. Why do we have the ban? It's not going to force people into housing, because there isn't any, right? It's not going to, maybe it'll force them out of the city. Because at this point, that's the only goal that we see that the city is trying to achieve through the camping ban.
Ms. White, your time has expired. Thank you very much for your comments.
Yes, ma'am. I'll see you on the.
Nissim? Following Nissim is David Rivera and then Mary Tappel.
Hi. Last Thursday, the mayor spoke in the Memorial Auditorium. I was amazed, but not that amazed. You know, I check things out. I don't mind telling you, I went to visit his mother. Her name is not Johnson, it's West. She's amazing, spunky. You know, as you know the mother, you know the kind of children she's going to have. Maybe challenged once in a while, but you know, the spirit's there. When I listen to the mayor, you know, I'm going to be running for mayor of San Francisco. I wonder if I'm good enough now, but I give it a shot. Never be scared of a challenge. But you know, the mayor, you know, got to put up with stuff every day. And he's got an amazing team. You know, John, one of the best city managers in the United States. No kidding. Who looks like a regular guy. Not even a show-off. I'm a show-off, because I'm funny. But I'm not funny when it comes to money. The mayor's spending money for the future of Sacramento. But not just for Sacramento, but for California. This is the seventh largest, what, budget in the country and the world or some shit like that? Excuse my language. Once in a while, I lose it. You know, I know I owe some phone calls to people here. But you know, today, I'm here for one reason. I don't know that Mr. Johnson is going to look for another position. He's got two years to go. But I'll tell you what. If he wants to go higher up, if he decides to run for another position.
Nissim Yurt?
I will support him.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for your comments. We'll pass that on to him. Thank you.
David Rivera?
Oh, he can hear it.
All right. Mr. Rivera?
Thank you. I'm David Rivera, actually known as Sacramento's Taxi Dave.
Taxi Dave.
Local celebrity cab driver.
Hi.
Okay, I'm here to present a case, or what I call a call to action for the city of Sacramento to regulate the TNCs, that transportation network companies named by the California Public Utilities Commission, also known by the press in the city of Sacramento as Lyft and Uber. My call to action plan specifically asks the city of Sacramento to seek and obtain a legal injunction from a judge of the courts against the TNCs with a cease and desist order on the TNCs, Uber, and Lyft, and to enforce this order. This will shut them down so the city can begin civil discussions with them and create a regulating framework. This framework will provide a safe and fair service provided to the city of Sacramento and its residents and visitors, thus protecting its residents' health and safety and protecting the city of Sacramento from lawsuit. My call to action for the city to regulate the TNCs has its basis in the number of facts, common law, statement made by an attorney's white papers, and a current landmark court case, Port Morgan versus Uber, in which that court case proves his assertions and a legal plan to successfully regulate them. Also, the facts that the city and all cities in the United States have the right and jurisdiction to regulate Uber and Lyft and the TNCs, not the state. The state is waiting for the cities to rise up and do this. The TNCs' associated drivers are current threats to the health and safety of the citizens of the city of Sacramento. There's two important points. You can read it later. The first one is that they're not going to adhere to fingerprint background checks recommended by all DA's throughout the United States. Also, their, their business practices.
Mr. Rivera, your time has expired, but we did give a copy of this to our city attorney. And what we're going to ask him to do is follow up with you, okay?
Okay.
We have your contact information on your speaker slip, too. So I didn't, I didn't see it in this document. We'll make sure that the city attorney gets this, and then we can follow up. Thank you very much for bringing it to us.
Mary Tappel?
Ms. Tappel?
Yeah, I'm Mary Tappel. I speak sometimes frequently about Lower American River Parkway safety and the necessity of everybody being able to go there, particularly people in the North area of Sacramento, people who happen to live also in Midtown and the downtown area where they're very close to the Lower American River Parkway. And we need continued safety for people to be able to get good exercise. And a time, some time ago, I was testifying about the proposed psychiatric health facility. And Councilman Hansen, and thank you for making the comment that the county does underfunds the Parkway. I believe they do underfund the Parkway. But also, the underfunding is still a significant amount of money, as these figures show. Does this turn on by itself?
There you go.
Almost $1 million for 2014, just for the county authorities to, to clean up after illegal campers and to deal with the illegal camping on just the, in just the county Parkway facilities. And this, this did include uncharged here, of course, are, sometimes there are two police officers available from the city of Sacramento. And I do myself appreciate that. I've had to be protected by city police officers when no rangers were available. Because the rangers are underfunded. We need more for the lower Parkway. I just wanted to make those points and to point out that this doesn't even include this almost $1 million a year to deal with the illegal camping, doesn't include fighting the arson fires that threaten everybody's lives in the Parkway, illegal campers and illegal recreators alike. And that, that is a very high public safety cost also, firefighting. And that, together, police and fire make up over half of the city's budget. And that's of sad necessity. So please continue to support Parkway, lower Parkway safety for everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Tappel.
Laura Rubokova is next.
Ms. Rubokova?
And then Sir Yocely and Macworthy.
Thank you. I haven't started speaking yet. Thank you. Last week, Mayor Johnson talked about a gulf of mistrust around the nation between police and the communities they enforce. I'm afraid that I'm seeing a gulf of mistrust growing before me with this city council. When I see that the Community Racial Profiling Commission has had no teeth for four years and that this council has been able to fix that at no cost and has done nothing about it, I feel that is a misuse of time and resources that I've provided you. 2015 must be the year when we stop giving this issue only lip service. The citizens of Sacramento deserve better from their city council and from their mayor. And so does the police department. I want to know, what is the status of the effort to reauthorize the Community Racial Profiling Commission? I want to know when this council plans to have a new ordinance in front of the Law and Legislation Committee. I know what I want out of this council. I want a new traffic stop study to include people on foot and people on bicycles as well. I imagine that a new study will cost tens of thousands of dollars, but I think it's an investment that's going to pay off more than some of the things that were suggested last week by Police Chief Summers.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments.
Sir Yocely?
Honorable Pro Tem Vice Mayor Ashby and distinguished city council members, I come here in the spirit of volunteerism. Mister, I can't pronounce his last name, so I just say Lengadu. He is here in Sacramento to develop neighborhoods at a lower cost than the special interests. I'll say it again. Than the special interests. He's losing money. I'm going to put him on blast. He just gave me $4,000 to develop his mansion on the corner of 13th and H to put the gate up. This man is sick. Mansion in Napa, oh my God. About the lazy boy in Napa. Yeah, I'm putting you on blast. Owns 40 properties in San Francisco. I'm in my kitchen four weeks ago cooking breakfast at 10:00 a.m. And I listen to news. I listen to AM radio. This is CBS News. In San Francisco today, Lieutenant Lengadu is being supported by labor and union commissions to run for the mayor of San Francisco. I went like, oh, excuse this right here. My clipper's broke. My hair clipper's broke, so I'm looking kind of, I'm not here to put you in awe or shock, but I am shocking. Next thing I want to speak on now, Ray, is this. Remember when we got that last big storm? I rolled through the street like I had wings on my back. Hey, has anybody thanked God for the rain? Did nobody thank him for the rain? Did nobody thank God for the rain? Now we have another storm on the Pacific coming in. And after it rains, won't nobody thank God for the rain? But when you go to your local pantry to purchase a tub of oatmeal in the future, that'd be $49.95. Now I want to say this. Every time you fill a pothole, look at my face. Because my first volunteerism came with our Honorable Mayor Kevin Johnson.
Okay. Your time has expired. But sorry, thank you for your comments. We appreciate you very much.
Macworthy? Following Mac is Armando Flores and then Ron Emsley.
First of all, we want to mention all some things of Polish brutality and the reason and who support Polish brutality. The coconuts and the organizations. The coconuts, organizations like NAACP and the Urban League, Black Cars. Now, when we look at this here of the Polish report, what do we see? Now, that church split a few years ago because the preacher, not him, the old man that died, was tampering with another woman in Water Avenue. But yet it's still, you funded here and funded it. That's going to help blacks. As long as the money come through the church, black folks, you going to be underhelped. That's the bottom line. Now, we saw something happen here a summer nights. The Jewish young man said, yeah, Oak Park and Deppers Heights. Everybody go. Nobody said, why wouldn't it go to the other neighborhoods? Because you had committed over 10 years, so many hundred thousand dollars to be split up. That's how black folks is bought, through nonprofit organizations, and they vote for the Democrat strategy. Public, this is why. Ain't nothing in this report pertaining to a law on deadly folks. Not nothing pertaining to a law on deadly folks. We are sold out on this and the pimps, Sunday morning pimps. Nonprofit organizations accepted this and not sit down talking to the chief, to not to put this garbage out there and go buy. This is policy. This is not law. Black folks, we want law. We want law to represent us. We don't want, when the money come up and we on the way to a Polish state, 1,000 police is, and how many going to be black? That's going towards the Polish state, people. The Polish population goes by. The population that's in that city.
Thank you, Mac.
And it is ridiculous. Black folks, you accept this and don't say nothing about it.
Thanks very much.
Armando?
Hello.
Mac, I'm not sure my being Jewish has anything to do with here.
My name is Armando Flores. I'm here again to speak to you guys against the anti-homeless ordinances that we have in Sacramento. And did I miss something?
No, go ahead. I'm sorry. We'll start your time over. Go ahead.
Is that okay?
Yeah, please go ahead.
Okay. Anyway, so we've had this ordinances floating around. And last Thursday, when the mayor spoke to the city, there was a mention there about doing something for the homeless. But it was like the only time I ever heard something talked about the subject. And after that, like, it was like nothing was ever said. And we don't have, we're not on the agenda for this conversation. Or we come here week by week asking questions and pointing things that are happening in the city, and we seem to not get an answer from anybody. What is going on with this project? What is going on with what the mayor talked about helping the homeless or doing something for the homeless? Is there really an idea going on around that you guys are not sharing with the public? Or was it just something to appease the city? Because there's a lot of people talking about the problem. I see it every day. I see a lot of people in the streets. I help a lot of people in the streets. And it's really ridiculous. When I come to these meetings and I hear you guys talk about all this money that we need to spend for different things in the city, but we never hear of any money spent for the people in the city. We're spending money on buildings and cars, an arena, trains, things that we really do not need. Can we talk about the people and how we can help the people of the city? We need to make the city a better city for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flores.
Ron Emsley? Following Ron is Reverend Paul Senior and then James Fago.
Can you blow this up a little? A little bit bigger. Along going, okay. This is a photograph of community policing that I've been exposed to. Oh, I want to say I made a terrible mistake. Last time, when I was complaining last Tuesday, I mentioned I was trying to reach my neighborhood officer the last three weeks. I should have said the last three months. So I just want to correct. Let's count these. This is one. This is two. Three. Four. Five. Six. Seven. Eight. Nine. Anyone have an idea of what those are? Anyone? I'll give you 100 bucks if anyone knows. This is an example of community policing in Oak Park. Let's see. We have a Neighborhood Watch. Let's see, we have a neighborhood watch, and we noticed some people going to this vicinity after hanging out in front of Wells Springs. And so, one of my neighbors went over here, the direction that they were walking, and he found this collection. Now, this guy is really safe though, because see, he's putting the stopper back, so you can't get pricked on it. So, this whole system, what you do is, you want the chief to bamboozle you, and then you get positive feedback, you feed back off of each other. You say how great he is, and he says how great you are, and how he wants community policing. But you can't reach your police officers for three months. That's community policing in Sacramento.
Mr. Emsley, your time has expired. Thank you for your comments.
Oh, you're, you're very welcome.
Thank you.
Reverend Paul Senior?
Reverend Paul?
Good evening, council. And I just wanna say thanks to all the people that come out on a continuous basis to help this city. I'm still noticing, I mean, it's, it's the fact of all the homeless people, they just kinda swept off the street here lately. But the harassment has kinda flipped itself. I mean, I'm starting to hear more friends calling that they getting pulled over because it's just cops and highway patrols just waiting on the side with nothing to do right now. So they catching the cars now, as well as of course, black people walking down the street. I don't know exactly what this city is all about in full, because I try to stay in and out of it mentally, but I'm kinda sickened by the way they keep harassing the homeless. I was blessed actually to come in contact with a friend of Alan Warren, which sits behind me, this 89-year young man, actually. He is actually a vet, Mr. Harvey Branner. He's done a lot for the Del Paso Heights area. I'm trying to actually step into this area as well, because I see that being, out of all the, I say the predominantly black areas from Oak Park, South Sac, and Del Paso Heights, that that one's just kinda falling between the, way between the cracks. All the businesses are shut, and once again, it's just continuous harassment up and down and around the streets from the police officers. And it's, it's just sad, you know, to where I know, as they indicated, all the extra cops that's gonna be on the streets here lately, I know the majority are gonna be Caucasian. And either way it's slicing, I'm sure if there's more African Americans, it'll be all subjects and trained to do the same thing. So all I can do is hope and pray that the city does get other different people to step into the city and help kinda patrol the city areas instead of the police officers. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you for your comments.
James Fago?
Well, once again, I'm with Community Dinner Project and Occupy Sacramento. I've been here many a time. I do wanna say thank you to the council members or whichever of their staffs were able to come out and talk to a few of us today. I really appreciate the personal interaction and starting to address some of our requests. I'm still fairly upset that we haven't found a date for the Community Dinner Project's different ordinances to be spoken about on the agenda. I would really like to see that date so that we can get people out here to help discuss it on that date. One of the things I just noticed also was a lady came up and discussed the cost of cleaning up the river, because people are gonna camp there either which way, ordinance or not. People are gonna need a place to sleep. It's not gonna stop it by having this ordinance, you're just costing yourselves more money. And now, that brings me to the Thousand Homes program. The Thousand Homes program is one that has saved Wyoming millions, or 100,000 homes, sorry, program, has saved the, their cities hundreds of millions of, or millions of dollars a year, just by giving people housing, a place to be. They end up getting off the drugs because they have a place to be, they get away from the negative environment, instead of having to be out here, not even able to get some sleep, and then, you know, do whatever you do so you can stay awake so you don't get arrested for sleeping, right? That, 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 kind of oxymoronic, you know? I've actually witnessed a lot of people who started out on the streets completely sober, but trying to stay away from being arrested for sleeping, end up becoming addicted to meth and speed and crack and all this stuff, because it helps them stay awake so that they don't have to worry about getting in trouble for sleeping. You know, and this is creating a cycle that is very destructive, not only to the individuals, but also the, to the city itself, because it's keeping people down and it's keeping them in a very frustrated and inhumane environment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, the last three speakers, Nathan Sweene, Cory Coburn, I believe, and Delphine Brody.
Mr. Sweene?
I was hoping to come down and speak on agenda item number 14, which was for upgrading the fluoride feeder systems. I was hoping to ask you guys to not vote that through, but obviously, I'm too late for that. You know, $300,000 for upgrading the feeder systems. It's an unexpected cost, it wasn't originally intended when the, when the fluoride, water fluoridation program went through. And that's, you know, that's nothing compared to the millions that it costs just to, to keep it going every year. And my main point is that I just, I want to ask you guys to, you know, none of you were on the council when the water fluoridation was originally voted through about, you know, 15 years ago or so. And there's been a lot of research in that area over the past 15 years, and so I'd ask you guys to look into that. I'm not, I don't mean just, you know, typing fluoride into Google and seeing what pops up. I mean actually looking into, you know, peer-reviewed scientific sources. You need to look into the, the health effects, the environmental effects, you know, and the main argument that the city has, or that I've heard from the city, is that the, you guys fluoridate our water because of the, the state law that mandates it, but it only mandates it for if, for the city if we can actually afford it. You know, there's, there's cities right next door, Davis, Downriver, they don't fluoridate their water, and the San Juan Water District upstream by Folsom Lake, they don't fluoridate their water.
Mr. Sweene, your time has expired. Thank you very much for your comments. Cory?
My name is Cory Coburn. I am currently a 31-year-old homeless veteran. I just wanted to come up and say, you know, I have mental health issues, I'm a veteran. I don't feel too honored by any of what's going on in Sacramento. I'm currently harassed by the police department. I have to stay up at night, like Mr. Clark said, just so I'm not chased around by the police. I have to sleep during the day to be able to live. I can't sleep at night because it's illegal. How am I supposed to come up? How am I supposed to do anything, like find a job? Go to the mental health appointments if I'm sleeping during the day? This is ridiculous. I mean, we need a hand up, not a hand out. Thank you.
Okay, before we hear from the next speaker, Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you. Mr. Coburn? Mr. Coburn? There is, Sacramento steps forward, just got some money to work with veterans who are homeless, and Mr. Chan there, Howard, raise your hand. See him in the, the great, the brown suit back there? He can put you in touch with Emily Halken in the city management office, who can connect you into those services. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Thank you.
Delphine?
Thank you, Ms. Brody, sorry about that.
Thank you. And the Community Dinner Project will also be meeting with, with Ms. Halken. Delphine Brody, I, I want to echo the comments of, of James Fago-Clark with regard to what, what we consider to be too much money spent on enforcement of a camping ban that, that should be repealed. That, that same close to a million dollars could have been spent to house those very same individuals, instead of to constantly harass them and, and cite them and arrest them, confiscate their only belongings. This is not necessary. This is not any, any type of, of long-term solution to homelessness. This is simply keeping homeless people suffering at much greater cost to the city and greater cost to our, our social fabric. I, I wanna talk briefly about what it's like to be homeless as a young woman in, in urban environment, as I was 17 years ago. I was homeless for three years in, in San Francisco and the East Bay and Portland, Oregon. I, I was a survivor of intimate partner violence. The person I lived with was verbally and, and physically and sexually abusive, and I had to flee for my safety, and I became homeless for seven weeks as I waited to get into a domestic violence shelter. I had applied for three. During that time, I was preyed on by people I stick with. The homeless shelters are not safe places for women. There's a lot of violence there, and people get their stuff stolen routinely there. There is not a Housing First program in those cities. There, there is now in Portland, Oregon, and I think we should look to that as a model. Housing first for, for domestic violence survivors, women and families. This can save lives. This can let people start over when they have been through something horrible that was not their fault.
Ms. Brody?
Yes.
Thank you very much for sharing your story with us. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Okay. That's our last speaker on public comment. Madam Clark, I believe you have an appointment to make?
I do. We have Community Racial Profiling Commission, Clifton Roberts, for District Four.
All right. Then we are on to council comments. Do my colleagues have some announcements to make?